How big of a sign advertising Dunkin' Donuts is there?
That's a good question. I'm not sure how big that is. I mean, whatever.
Is it larger, is it smaller than this one?
Uh... I'm not sure. Again, whatever size it's there right now is the size that we're looking at.
Oh, okay, okay.
It'll be the same size.
Thirty-two square feet.
And this is also measurements to each other.
Twenty-four.
There could be sixty-four square feet, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And they got twenty-four and fourteen.
They will not be bigger than what's there right now. It can't be.
So they're well under the sixty-four for the building.
What size is that?
This is twenty-four and that's fourteen. So thirty-eight?
Mm-hmm.
Forty? Forty, a little bit. I think it's about forty. Yeah. Maybe not even that. So they're good.
And have a current lease with the owner?
Yes. And the one thing that I didn't mention at first, planning board meeting I was here, but it was brought up to the historical commission and they were okay with it, was this right here is the speaker post for the drive-through menu board. It would actually go in front of it. And this is pretty much what it would look like. Customer would drive up. That's the speaker right there. And it also says here the clearance, just to make sure that nobody hits the drive-through.
You're gonna guarantee that?
I'm not gonna guarantee it, but when they do hit it, it's actually on a spring that it'll actually do some...
Oh, it is?
It'll do a siren type thing to say, you know, yeah, don't hit us, please. Yeah. And then also, because my concern to them was, they did ask if I was gonna add any lighting. The only lighting is, again, it's right underneath here. There's four LED lights shooting down. And they were okay with that because it's shooting down again.
And then you got a...
Where these lights are actually gonna be on this?
It's right, on this post, yeah, aiming down at the vehicle.
So that post is this light?
Yes, yes. Again, it serves for multi-purposes, again, for the lighting and also when it does rain, when you're at the speaker.
Oh, so this is the menu board right underneath it?
No, the menu board will be right over here.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's just the speaker, okay.
This is the speaker post, yeah. Speaker post, and then, again, it's that three things in one.
I'm gonna look at it.
I swear, a change. I know you asked for the measurement for the sun, that's the menu board, yeah. And they were okay with me moving the drive-through canopy that's there right now, move it over as well, too. They were okay with that as well.
The roof, the brick facade, everything stays the same?
Stays exactly the same, yeah. So pretty much what you're looking at, I'm looking, the owner of the building is going to be changing the roof on it. Same, it'll be the same exact thing. I'm looking at replacing the windows. It's gonna look exactly the same thing, just newer.
Are you moving the location of anything, windows?
No, 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 no. The windows stay exactly the same. If the side of the drive-through, there is a small window that's there right now. It's an AC unit, that right there, that's existing there right now. I'm looking at that capping that. So I'm looking at putting brick over there.
Okay, but you actually are putting in a new window. You're moving...
You're moving the drive...
No, no, I'm just moving this, moving it toward here. So I'm moving this whole thing with the window right here.
Yeah, that's, you are moving the drive up over to here.
Yes, yes, that's correct. But I'm not adding an additional though.
So this will, this will become a solid wall?
That's correct.
Okay, there it is. I'm sorry, there it is, okay.
And there is the new...
So that's that, that's where you got that little window and that one?
Yeah, this is existing.
That's where the little...
The AC unit is. And that's gonna be locked up, and then this is going down. Okay, yeah, that's what he said last time. Yep.
The existing AC unit that's there right now is, it's not working, so we're looking at replacing the other thing. And right now, I think there's one AC unit condenser that's up front, another one in the back of the unit. So we're gonna have everything in the back, so it's not in the front. Here's the letters. Another second letter from historical commission is of approval.
Did it make you change anything?
They did not. No, the only concern they had was the pylon sign, to see if I'd be able to not have it interior eliminated. I did take effect at Dunkin', like they asked, and Dunkin's did prefer just to leave it the way it was. That was the only change. Well, I'm sorry, really, the only concern they had.
Are these our lines?
Okay. It could be yours if you'd like to.
Also, Mr. Zoir will tell you what he thinks.
So what I would like, if, do you have this electronically?
I do, yeah. You did say to get a PDF.
Yeah, email it to the planning at hadleema.org. And what I'll do is I'll attach it to the letter. And I'll just need you to fill in address there. But let me make the motion. So I'll make a motion to waive site plan approval for the move of Dunkin' Donuts into the Donut Man site based upon a determination, this proposed work constitutes no external enlargement of the existing floor area. The building sign will be externally illuminated, the pylon sign will match the existing size, and the drive-up window will be moved. That's the motion.
Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So if you would just fill in contact information there.
You give them people free samples when you open up?
We will, yeah.
What is the ethics requirements that we can take? Give us up to fifty bucks?
Security.
Mine is a quick suit. This is the Marina additional building for Smith College.
Yep.
That we brought in about a year and a half ago. And the instructions are to add your decision onto the plans, so need the...
Oh, this is just the safety of the final plan then?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, this is the one, this is the addition he put on last year.
No, no, this has gone to construction yet.
Oh, has it gone into, oh, that's right. This was the new building over down here. That's why I'm sorry.
Construction within a month or so.
Okay.
So do you have the special plan, or I need one?
What do you do here? You're knocking this whole existing building out?
Yes. And this is the footprint of the new building.
Yeah, right.
That's the one that is...
Are you keeping anything in what you did?
The front portion.
That's, you know, that's on my...
Thanks.
You acted on this in...
I say about a year ago.
Yeah, about a year, almost a year and a half.
Okay.
Two thousand and fifteen.
Uh, no, that's just administrative. It's just following the condition of the site plan approval.
And if you sign this, you can keep this one for your records. That's my transmission.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Next up is Barry Roberts.
Thank you. I'm here to speak to you about East Street Commons, the fifty-five and over project that I'm doing off East Street. I think you're all aware of that. When we came to the planning board originally to get approvals of that, I made a mistake, I believe, in not asking you for a waiver of the setback on the southerly boundary. I asked you for a waiver of the setback requirement on the northerly boundary. And we're finding, as we put the project, it's symmetrical. And we're bumping up against, I can show you here, it would be commons in the center. The buildings are lined up basically the same. And with a forty-foot setback here, we're bumping right up against trying to cite the building. So I would like to ask you to consider a waiver on this south side the same as you did on the north side.
How much is that?
What's that?
How much was that?
Thirteen.
Thirteen foot set, rear yard?
Side yard.
Hmm?
Side yard.
Side yard.
I mean, if you're looking at the property in relation to East Street.
Okay, but it's the rear of those buildings.
Correct.
Correct.
Along the bike trail.
This is East Street.
Correct.
This is Standbrot over here approximately. This is, who's the property?
Puska's, right?
Puska's your neighbor. For the south.
Yeah.
Okay.
So as we know, this was all, you know, tree because of the bike path. So it's all, I don't know if I need your approval to do this, but within this setback area, I would like to create a burn that I can landscape because to give some privacy to here and to here. So I don't know if I need your approval to do that, but I would like to show you what I intend to do.
Ninety-one.
So I had John, can you just draw the idea of what we do for a burn? We just, on the backside, the neighbor's side, we mow that, keep that mowed. And on this side near the houses, we put some shovel and stuff to try to create a separation between our shelves and the neighbors.
So you want to go down from fifteen feet to...
Yeah, so I think at the time of permitting, it was under the previous zoning bylaw before last Fall Town meeting, which modified, I think it's twenty-seven point six point five point two, which had like, I think, a fifty-foot, seventy-five-foot front yard and maybe fifty-foot side yard. So the original approval was a waiver down to forty feet here and to thirteen feet here. You subsequently changed your zoning bylaw, I believe, to relate back to four point two, the dimensional table, which is the fifteen-foot side yard. So I guess essentially what we'd be asking for is...
I don't think we meant, I don't think we changed this part, though, did we?
We did not change the rear yard at the last town meeting, no.
Okay. If that is rear yard, then we would be requesting a waiver down to thirteen feet.
So what we did at the town meeting was to actually correct an error in the tables of setback.
Okay.
But this has its own internal setback requirement. So I don't think we changed this.
Okay.
So I guess then what would we have to do?
Throw a waiver from those setbacks down to thirteen feet.
So going from forty feet to thirteen feet? Does it have to be that much?
Well...
I mean, I mean, I know that's what you're requesting. I'm just wondering, I mean, I'm just asking a question. Because the bike path is on one side, but it wasn't a big deal.
Bike path is here.
Right, here.
Yeah, on that side.
Right.
Finally, and then you know, auto express, the back of it, I forget.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah, I'm not worried about auto express. I'm not worried about, it's the one home up here that I'm working.
These are already set.
This is all wooded. That's why I don't start the burn till, that's this house. This is all everybody's, this person at night.
Well, aren't these houses already here?
I put these houses up now.
This one?
Not this one.
Not this one?
This one, this one, and I'm working on this one.
So these are already set back...
I set this, right.
At forty feet?
And that's when I found out I had, you know, the real problem.
Okay, so let me just, I just want to make sure we understand. This house, this one's not here.
That's not.
This is, this is, this...
Well, this doesn't comply anyways because you allowed me to set it on the existing footprint of the house we tore down.
Right, okay.
These two.
Right.
So they don't comply, right?
This one isn't here.
Right.
This one is, this one is, and...
This one.
This one is.
Like this fellow here requested a sunroom right here.
Yep.
We can't do it. No, because I'm two foot off.
How far, what is this distance about? Fifty feet?
One inch is fifty.
Okay, one inch fifty. So from the, this is the road, right?
That's the property line.
Okay, that's fine. So this house is back three hundred and, three hundred and twenty feet, three hundred and ten feet more or less. And this house here is right about here, right?
It's right here.
Right about here?
Across from it.
Okay.
That's the Puska house.
Okay. I would...
This is all, as you know, scrubbed out, right?
Right, I understand. So I would, this is my request. This is negotiable, obviously. With this house in line with...
I don't have any problem with that at all.
And then this house is set back far, that you could give the general, the person, I would think, their sunroom, and the rest of these setback thirteen feet, I would have a problem with that at all.
I would need this one to be thirteen.
I know, that's what I mean. I said, this one, this one could be set back.
That would be perfect.
So these first, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call the first four.
Right.
Set back the forty feet, and all the rest can be thirteen.
Those ones. These three are already, four are, and I'm happy to set that one.
And then...
These are all in already, right?
No, this, this one, this one he wants to add a sunroom, which will bring it back probably within thirteen feet. That's what I'm saying, because I'm sorry, this house is over here. It's not gonna be really impacting that property, partly. Okay, I'm good with that.
So what's the number, thirteen?
Thirteen feet.
Thirteen feet. Are these numbered, the house numbered?
Yeah, this is, these are outside of the street, one, three, five, seven, nine.
So one, three, five, seven, setback forty feet. And the rest, seven through whatever, thirteen feet.
Thank you. All the rest of the proposed houses throughout the project on the south side. On the south side.
Right.
Can go up to thirteen feet.
From the property.
Is that what you want?
Yes, with the burn, with the burn, with the landscape burn.
This is one of the situations where we have the ability to waive the regulations of setback incorporated into the bylaws. So we do have some...
I was just gonna ask that, I was gonna just ask that question.
In the planning board, in the, in fact, it's a typographical error. We'll blame the Pioneer Valley for that. But the, the planning board waive, may waive any or all dimensional requirements in the judgment of, in the judgment of the board.
Just for your information also, Barry, we're working on, hopefully, this Fall Town meeting, trying to bring something forward about this...
Inclusion.
Inclusion zoning, so that, to put the money into a fund and trying to take the response, because we realize what a disaster this is causing, and that wasn't the intention. We had no idea what this entailed. So the TDR goes into a fund, we'd like to do something where you could simply put something to a fund, move on, and then you are, okay, you're, you're all set, okay?
That would be great. How is it possible to waive condition, what is it, Tom?
Seven D.
I mean, I'm perfectly happy to do one.
I understand that, and...
Seven D's got me locked in here.
Right.
So how do we resolve that?
Well, you're not ready for any CLs, are you, yet?
Till July, end of July for this one.
Okay, okay. We're not quite ready to say we're gonna be ready for this fall. We're trying, we're gonna try for it. So why don't you come back to see us, maybe like beginning of July, months from now, and see where we stand. And hopefully, we'll have something.
Mid-July.
Mid-July, oh, that's right, Fourth of July, Fourth of July, so we won't be here, mid-July.
Okay.
And we'll hopefully at least have a plan to be going forward for the town meeting. And, 'cause as part of the original TD, I mean, the original inclusionary zoning, there was, there was a provision for the funding. And we simply took that out. We have all the wording. We just need to get the fine details for the actual funding itself. And once that's done, we should really be, you'll be a much happier person.
Yeah, we'll make it a lot easier, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's reasonable, and we can work with that.
Okay.
I just wanted to mention that I went to the Memorial Day parade with my wife, and Mr. Roberts was a participant in that parade. And I think as you become participating in town affairs like that, that's very impressive.
What did he do?
That's impressive.
I walked and somebody else drove my horse.
Really? You weren't driving your own team?
No, I was walking beside him. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, good. Mr. Roberts, Mark Donald.
Two things, one, first, pardon?
Oh, boy.
We talked to you a while ago about the park.
Yep.
And what we'd like to do is make the official submission tonight. We had previously shown a little amphitheater area that has been removed. The parking lot has been slightly decreased. So it's the same project that we formally presented to you before. Would you like to schedule a hearing? If it's possible?
I'm not sure that's possible. Here's some old things we had in my briefcase. We had a letter from, I believe it was the Park Commissioner or somebody, saying that they had not agreed to give up Zatirica Park.
No, that's not what, I don't think that's what it meant. What it meant was, I think it was for the ZBA, they were saying, Zatirica Park has not been discontinued. It is an active park, and therefore, they don't need ZBA approval for the expansion.
Okay.
Which I think the ZBA agreed with.
Okay, that's what that was?
I think so.
I'm just a messenger. I'm here for another reason, Dave. Knew they were coming to submit plans, so I brought them.
Well, you're here for another reason, but it's the same project, right?
I have another project I want to talk to you about too, bud.
Well, what do you want to talk about?
This one right now, this one right now.
Well, we can schedule this.
Schedule it.
And if the problems come up, the problems come up. Okay, so...
I'll make a motion to waive the filing fee.
Okay.
Other than the newspaper bill.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, did we vote for Barry Roberts' setback? We made a motion, but we didn't vote.
Oh, that's right, good point.
Yeah.
Yes.
We didn't vote for you, knowing, I just heard that, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to reduce the setback to thirteen feet from lot seven to the rear of the property.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously, yes.
Okay.
Good point, John, thank you.
Okay, so back to the motion to waive the filing fee other than the newspaper advertising for Zatirica Park.
Of motion? Of motion or a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So we want to schedule that for July eighteen. July eighteen good for everybody? Anybody else?
Yep.
Nope, that's... So we're having a public hearing for, oh, you're gonna put two pavilions in there? Is that the way it is?
Pavilion here.
Yep.
What's the purpose of that?
Pavilion here, where the second one?
You know, the small picnic table.
Well, one's six hundred square feet, one's five hundred square feet.
Wasn't that part of the...
Thirty by forty, that's... That's a hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty square feet.
That's twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred.
That's twelve hundred.
Wasn't that the arena? They, they had something...
They took the arena out.
Originally, we had the...
Didn't they have a building there, or something?
Yeah, that was taken away.
That says future, future, future. Picnic tables, picnic tables, litter receptacle. Picnic tables don't qualify. They've only got, I mean, it's like half this building is pavilion pad, thirty by forty.
So it's a pad.
Okay, that's twelve hundred. That's eleven hundred and thirty. But they act like, they put in here like it's two separate pavilions. So where is the pavilions? Especially when it says future. Can we shoot the messenger? That's all details.
Pavilions must have been...
That's just a drainage.
The application must be fully awarded. There was a pavilion pad there for future use.
Okay, all right, so you'll come out at the hearing.
You get one, get one set of the plans to the town clerk.
Correct.
And...
So what are you doing with that, Jimmy? Just making a note of it?
Yeah, public hearing, seven eighteen.
So this has to go to the town clerk, so she has to know the fee's been waived?
Yes. Okay.
And I got one more question for you. Back from the second, we submitted plans for the manage that we had to do with barn shops.
Yep.
And at the time, I neglected to ask the question as to whether or not the board was going to require peer review. The project, the building, proposed building meets all setback requirements. It decreases the area of impervious drainage and not changed.
Where is this gonna go on?
This is Luzzell Street.
Bill's barn shops.
Oh, okay, okay.
The new manage up at front, so stormwater is decreasing scenario will meet all setback requirements. But, you know, obviously, the board's decision as to whether or not you want peer review, and that's the question I forgot to ask for. We have shown that we satisfy parking, open space requirements, and decrease in area pavement.
So that, that's replacing the original building?
There was a building here previously. There was some buildings were torn down. They've already been torn down.
Does that equal more or less the same square footage that was there?
Um, I don't know if it ma, it matches exactly. And several buildings have been torn down here. But the whole site plan now would be rooted for open space for the entire parcel. It was at one time, remember, two parcels, but now it's a single parcel, so we looked at the entire parcel and make sure that it complies with zoning for setback requirements.
Could we limit it just to the drainage then?
The, again, the drainage aspect of it, drainage calculation, basically, it's a paved site. And when we're through the project, the amount of pavement is less after the manage goes in, and some minor modification of parking than it was now. So we really didn't do any drainage calculations because we decreased the amount of runoff coming from the site.
How are you decreasing the runoff? Are you tearing up asphalt?
Yes. We placed some of the asphalt with grass items. It's, it's close, but it is a slight decrease. And side note, it is going to the Conservation Commission as well, because we are within the floodplain. So they're getting a notice from town application as well.
Do you, do you have the before and after documented on the plans and everything?
Uh, yes, this is, the impervious areas shown before and after.
Will the Conservation have a peer review, do you know?
Uh, I don't know regarding this project.
They occasionally do.
Yeah. The only aspect, I think, this regards to the Conservation Commission is compensatory flood storage because of the, working in the floodplain.
Are you building up the elevation at all, or any...
The elevation, the footprint of the building will be slightly above the hundred-year flood elevation. And we put a compensate for by putting a slight depression up Route Nine to make up the balance.
But I mean, there was an existing building that they removed, right?
Pardon?
There was an existing building that they knocked down there, right?
Yes, there was. But we've gone through all the calculations to show the pre and post from a flood, flood storage perspective. And that will be reviewed by the Conservation Commission.
So that was the structure that was removed from...
That was along the...
Looks like they kept part of it.
Yeah, they kept part of it, yes.
That's on the westbound border, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
The proposed building's gonna be... And again, when the original design for the original hotel, I mean, was designed intentionally based on... And again, when the original design for the original hotel, I mean, was designed, intention based and associated, was based on this site plan, so this was the original drainage calculation, which accommodated the drainage for the project pre- and post. And also, we've analyzed that versus that to make sure that we're not impacting the drainage on that portion. Again, it's, if the board wants peer review, we're fine with that.
Well, this is the second request we've had in a, in a couple of meetings regarding waiving the peer review, and we were asking about the cost of the last one, and is it a significant amount, dollar wise?
No, I don't think so. I don't think it's an extensive dollar amount, it's just the amount the board wants to have it, it's a twenty-five minutes back. We don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, it's just what it's mine.
I, I...
You know, it's ten thousand dollars is one thing, if it's three or four hundred dollars, it's another thing for...
Yeah, it's, it's close to fifteen hundred, I believe, for like a minimum.
Engineering for me is between three and five thousand dollars. That's if it's a more extensive drainage.
I would think just to...
I don't, I don't think the dollar cost should have anything to do with it, either you want it or you don't want it, okay?
I would think just to review, everything else seems good. I agree with, I think just to cover ourselves, we should do the drainage only.
You tapped on review, that's fine.
Okay.
But that drainage still has to comply with the MS four laws, isn't it? Or is that existing doesn't help?
It's existing, we're not changing or detrimentally impacting the drainage. And we're told we tend to add...
I would like, I would just like to see something on the drainage, because that's the one thing, everything else we can kind of agree, you know, you've got less parking, you comply with two for one and everything, the numbers can, can work. And I don't disagree that the drainage is probably fine, but I think just to cover ourselves, I'd like to see a, a review of just the drainage.
You know, I look at this, it's not greater than what was there, it's less.
That's correct.
Correct.
But, you know...
I don't see why they should do it.
This, this part of town is starting to be developed more and more, and I think we've gotta start looking a little closer at it.
Yeah.
But it's less of a building.
I understand.
You know, that's my two cents, I think just the drainage would be good. What's the board, the rest of the, John says he doesn't think we're the need at all. Mike?
I think we need it.
Just for the drainage?
Yeah, yeah.
Just for the drainage.
Just for the drainage.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Taproom is already on the agenda. It is... Seven thirty-four. Mr. Larry, we'll cover you, and then we'll go on with the public hearings, so we don't have to drag you out to the end, or if you want to hang around, you may.
Oh.
Obviously. You're really here for the...
Couple of things.
We received zero comments, so therefore, by default, we're good.
Okay, we'll go with that, and then I think we talked last year about you wanted to vote informally adopted or accept it.
Correct.
And that is on the agenda.
Correct.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the master plan update. Does it have a, does the final date on it?
Uh, I always use today's.
Okay. Okay, the master plan update as of six, six, seventeen.
That's the motion, do you have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I certainly would like to see some more talk on solar and accessory apartments.
I think that can be done, doesn't have to be part of the master plan, that's a zoning thing, so that's nothing to...
That can actually be, uh, to do, as part of the, to be investigated.
Yeah, do that as part of the work program for this coming year.
I mean, that's right.
Just on the master plan.
Okay. Motion, motion in second, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, I picked up the printer, and I talked to DHC today, they've lost it, and they will accept the digital version of it, if they want a hard copy. So, I'll be in range just to get that, and put it in the prop box, and they'll pick it out as well. So, that's great. Um, second thing was the FY eighteen PBA contract.
Right.
We emailed you a digital version of that. And that sort of has the scope for next year.
This your contract?
Yes.
Are you asking for more money?
Uh, no.
You asking for what?
No.
The one I've got says draft on it, wait a minute.
Yeah, I emailed you another green, a green version.
Oh, darn.
But it's, it's the same, hasn't changed.
Okay, I didn't print, I fingerprinted out the draft working by mistake.
That's okay, you want a clean copy?
Well, you got a clean copy, well, you need three of them, but...
Yeah.
You just need a plan to see the chairman's signature.
Yeah.
I will entertain a motion to have the chairman sign the three copies of the fiscal year two thousand eighteen Planning Assistant with PVC.
I'll make a motion to authorize the chairman to sign.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, well, signees, get it by the town accountant, and then we'll give it back to you.
Yeah, that sounds great.
And we may be the first, in a long time, that we made it, we just missed, we just missed last year.
You go the way easy just now.
How many, how many hours do you think you dedicate to Hadley? It's gotta be a lot.
Oh, yeah, it's over a hundred.
Yeah, so you're...
Don't be tapping them on the back that much.
I gotta tell you, you're cheap.
It is a...
You're cheap, it's all the deal.
...conversation, and the doctor and I talked about it, and it is a, it's a good investment.
Yeah.
In terms of hiring a, your own in-house alternative.
Okay, so, this would be a good time, since we have the, the work program, John, you wanted to add two things to the work program?
Right, solar and accessory apartments.
Okay, what part, what aspect of solar? Location or...
Locations. And I gotta think about screenings.
Okay.
And the takeover of agricultural land.
Okay, so Larry, will you just make a note that that, just add that to the scope of work?
And that's very tiny, because we're doing a lot of green community stuff at the office, and we're doing a lot of new bylaws. In fact, we are working on a eleven-acre solar farm in Southampton, where they're cutting down eleven acres of forest, which...
Not going well, I would think, by some people.
Well, this is...
Question.
This is the delicate balance between the rights of the individual property owner and the rights of the community. I mean, if it was your land, and that woods was doing nothing, and you could get some income from it...
Well, this is on a very large farm. And there's, there's a lot of acreage that's been cleared in these graves for pasture land, and then there's this like, about fifteen acres of forest at the far end of it.
Yep.
And rather than put it on ten acres of the pasture land, they're taking down forests and putting it there.
I don't care what we do, we're not gonna satisfy everyone, you know?
No, you're not.
Question on, separate topic, when we talked before about the inclusionary zoning, do you know of any towns that have a fund set up like we have for our TDR fund?
Uh, like a trust?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah, I'm not sure if there are any in this area that do.
Well, you don't...
And it's been a hot topic in the eastern part of the state.
Our inclusionary zoning bylaw originally had a housing trust fund component, which got stripped out at town meeting because of objections from the finance committee. Can you, I went looking for the original text. You do?
I have the original.
Okay.
I believe this is one of your master plan goals or topics.
Right, so, could you find something for the eastern, could you find something on the funding and get it to us? Because like we talked to Mr. Ber, we, Mr. Roberts, we'd like to do something, because there's some stuff coming up besides his that's going to hit, we've got some subdivisions that are gonna be hit, this is an inclusionary zoning threshold. And we're finding out, just so we talk about, and we talked about it with you, that this is way more involved than we thought, and that was not our intention.
It really is, and you know, what a lot of towns are finding is the little painting thing has become a problem. The trust aspect of it has gotten a lot of, a lot of discussion, and then the infamous having your housing authority monitor everything has sort of hit a brick wall. And then, because I know we had that issue with Mr. Roberts, and I think just what every town has that clause in there.
Yeah.
And I've actually been talking to the state about that, you know, that's probably a good thing to take out of their model. And, and so essentially, I think the alternative is, you know, there are entities out there that you can hire to do the monitoring, that's what you have to do, that's what you have to do.
And if we got a fund in, the, I mean, something that can be administered by a, I don't wanna say one-stop shopping, but to have ten different entities, just, I'm stretching it obviously, trying to enforce this across could be a, to me, looks like a record for disaster.
Yeah, well, I agree.
How is, is the local housing authorities that you know are rejecting to do this?
Well, yours is the first one that's really come out and said that, but none of, none of the other... Is it, it's, it's the state that's sort of now recommending they not get involved in these private developments.
So, somebody's gonna do it.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean, there are agencies out there.
Right.
They can do that, I know that there's, used to be called APP, now it's Wayfinders, but down in Springfield, I think there's something, a, an agency, an HAMRS, that can do it. It's just they don't have to pay for it.
I think the point Larry made earlier was that one, Executive Office of Housing and Community Development, one branch of the state agency sets up these suggested zoning bylaws that says the housing authority should supervise it. Another branch of the same agency is telling the housing authorities that they shouldn't do it.
Right, and it's funny, because after the meeting I was at, when I first learned about this from Mr. Roberts, I was at a meeting with Phil Raelt from the, from the bylaw side of it. And I had mentioned it to him, that you know, this is, this issue that's popped up, and his, he kind of got a, oh, oh S moment, that, you know, holy cow, yeah, you know, and, and everybody in the state is pretty much got a part of this, so it's an issue they're gonna have to address.
Larry, getting back to solar for a second, how are the wealthier communities in eastern Mass handling it, say, Wellesley, Newton, Beverly?
I can check.
Are they, are solar fields being put in these communities, or are they getting, or are they getting around it somehow?
I'm assuming yes, because you really can't prohibit them?
Yeah, but...
You just regulate them?
I'd like to just see what they're doing.
Well, I can do that.
I'm suspecting something like Wellesley, you don't have any ten-acre parcels that are available.
You know, they got probably Wellesley, Wellesley College, you could put it right in the middle of that, you know?
They can do anything they want.
That's my, that's my question, though. Is, is the burden falling unreasonably on western Mass, especially communities that have a lot of farmland?
I spent a year and a half in Spencer over the last two years, and in that year and a half, I think there were seven that were, including one that was like seventy-five acres. I mean, and they're enormous, I mean, they are out two megawatt facilities or...
Spencer's a little different from Wellesley or Newton or Beverly.
Well, it is, but I mean, it's, it's that's central Mass.
Yeah, well, I'd say that's probably more poverty there than out here.
I'm not sure so much eastern Mass, western Mass, it may be a wealthy community, less likely...
Just curious.
But we can, I can check it.
Okay.
How are those solar fields doing during the weeks where you don't have any sunlight? Any idea?
They generate some.
Yeah, they still...
They still generate.
It's only if, you know, the darkness of night.
Yeah.
And don't grab those wires. As long as the sun's shining, they're pumping it out.
What else have you got, Larry, that's it?
Uh, and the definitions, I sent them to Tim after following the last meeting, he was very happy, very happy and grateful that the board was tackling this. He had a couple of comments, he's gonna look them over, we're gonna get you to sit down and go over them.
Okay.
But he was, this is gonna help him a lot. And that's all.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you very much, see you in a month.
I will not stay.
Nope, you will not see it.
That's right, see you in two months. Fourth of July is our next...
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Unless you wanna come here and...
No, but thank you for pointing that out.
Good night, all right. Um, we'll go on with some of the quicker ones here, let's see. Public hearing, taproom.
Do you want that one?
Yes. The Hadley Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June sixth, two thousand seventeen, beginning at seven fifteen, and the Hadley Senior Center Meeting Room. Excuse me. Purpose of the hearing is to review the application of a taproom for special permit establishment focused on primarily serving liquor at the existing Mill Valley condominium, Mill Valley Commons building at the intersection of Muss, Russell, and Mill Valley Road. Application and plan may be viewed in the town clerk's office during normal business hours, published twice in the Gazette, May twenty-three and thirty. And what do you wanna do?
We have a special permit granted, so I can move forward with the liquor license and open a taproom at that location.
How much, how many square feet you're gonna be doing?
Two thousand four hundred and twenty-two.
Oh, pretty good size, though.
Yeah.
That's about, what, half the building?
No, the building is five, like, it's a drawing here, forget it, the building is five unit, five units, and it's one of the, the middle ones, twenty-four, twenty-two. Taking it to one, one of the middle ones.
How big was, was it again?
Two thousand four hundred and twenty-two.
And where are you gonna locate this in that campus?
It's, so it's right where, number C, sorry, so the building, first building here is a dance studio, we are right here.
So, this one's towards the road?
This one's towards the road, yeah, here's the main, yep, here's nine right here.
Okay, so it's gonna be this, this one right here?
Correct, yes.
This is the one they're gonna see, Route nine?
That's it, yeah. There it is.
I guess this is the layout, the layout there in terms of plan, as well as description of that in the last meeting.
Just for the audience, when we, when we applied for this, we, we redid the zoning bylaws in a tabular form or a spreadsheet kind of a form, as opposed to the original Word listing. We discovered that a liquor establishment that serves only liquor and not food was not permitted at all in a town of Hadley unless it was a nonprofit club. So, we, rather than change the whole bylaw, we put it, it's now permitted in the business zones, the industrial zones, with a special permit from the planning board, and that's why this is about, 'cause it's, it's really a form of a, I don't wanna call it a restaurant, but if they're serving liquor only, that's what this gentleman wants to do, and that's why this is being done. It's not a site plan approval, because the building has already gone through site plan approval, this is a special permit to allow him or this business to serve liquor, primarily, and, you know, whatever minor little snacks he may have, I'm sure will be part of it.
Well, when you say liquor, let's clarify, beer and wine mostly, eventually probably liquor, but focused largely on the craft brewers, the craft wineries, the farmer brewers locally.
Just, um...
Not a place to be doing shots, you know, and things that nature, so...
This bylaw only allows the use, the authority is the selectmen to grant you the permit.
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct.
You need a, you need a liquor license.
You need a liquor license, yeah, we're not granting the liquor license, we're only granting the use, the, the right to, to be such a business in this zone. Yes, question?
Yes, hi, um, yeah, I have a, first of all, can you ask proprietor, you're the person who's doing this license?
I'm proprietor of the business, not the builder.
Not the builder?
Yes.
Okay, so, yes, of the, of the business that you own is taproom.
Correct.
I'm, I would be your neighbor across the street, and I have, I have a... First of all, Kathy Salvatore, I live right, right across from the empty road into the Mill, Mill Valley Commons. And I have, I'm a resident that keeps a property, right on the top of the property. And also alongside, on the other side, there's, there's tree houses, also residents. I've seen, I've been here for over fifty-five years, I've seen lots of changes up and down in time, like all you guys have seen, as I have the age. So, we have residential basically going on, and across from the Mill Valley Commons, I'm here as a resident. The problems why I'm sort of against you having a taproom here with a liquor license is, first of all, there would be extra traffic being, you know, coming and going in and out of that driveway, and it would just, there would be cars, trucks, and motorcycles, because taprooms, you know, I used to frequent establishments myself. I have a brother that also loves motorcycles, so entering and leaving the premises on your establishment that you own, that's between five PM and probably one or two AM. As, as a resident area, after that, between the five and the two, or, you know, the next day, we sort of like our quiet time. After a long day's work, I'm a caretaker for my two elderly parents now, which is quite draining if you're better than a caretaker for your folks. And also, my Mary Byron, which, who lives across, directly across Route nine, she is also a caretaker and a retired nurse. So, with, with just Route nine... So, with, with just Route 9 being on, it'd be my right, now I'd be dealing with more ins and outs that I would hear from my house. I think that would make it a little bit more dangerous for myself and also for the point on the top, coming, coming in and out. People will come off Route 9, if anybody knows how Route 9 can be, on busy weekends or when the students are back, or, I'm assuming old time or whatever it might be. Drivers are often frustrated being on Route 9, stuck in the traffic, coming over the Coolidge Bridge into our town, and when they come off of Route 9 and bear to the right, on Mill Valley Road, it's a forty-five mile per hour area, and people love to get off of Route 9. With the new customers entering, entering into your, into the Mill Valley Commons and leaving, just across my driveway, could cause, could cause more accidents there. And also, there's a, there's a couple, there's a telephone pole right across from that driveway, so, yikes. Right now, I just noticed I was coming from Mill Valley on to Route 9, and the stop sign there is pushed over. That gets smashed every now and then when you get on Route 9. Leaving the Mill Valley Road properties, it's a little of an incline going onto Route 9, and so, and it's very hard in a dangerous spot to be pulling out, either going down to North Hampton or out to Amherst. And I hear a lot of peeling out traffic, so with the additional trucks and cars and motorcycles, in my quiet time, I'm going to hear more and more of that. And just in May, we had a three-car accident there. It was a bump, bump, bump kind of a thing. So, this is why I'm sort of concerned about having just more traffic, never mind happy people leaving our establishment. Are they just drinking? I was concerned about that. Would there be more entertainment to keep the people happy? So, you're talking maybe, I don't know if they call it a jukebox anymore, I even haven't looked up how it is spelled, they, it's a T-E-P-O-L-I-C, it's K, it's jukebox, I don't think they have those anymore. Also, I'm concerned about the safety of the two other businesses located on the, on Mill Valley Commons. The dance studio is way over to my side, and there's, I believe, that's A section, B section is empty, and it's a smaller little section, and this gentleman wants to have the C section, the D section, and then the, here's the martial arts center that was just open there. And the martial arts people, they, they have their, their times, their hours, and they do go past 5:00. With people coming and going, maybe after their hard work day, want to go to the tap room, might create a little bit of a problem with people coming and going from that, that martial arts place, too. The dance place, I believe they, they would have maybe some adults, it's an Irish, I don't know, how did Irish dancing get into it? But I mean, it's a little Irish dancing kind of establishment that has gone in there. I'd just like the board to consider if your driveway was at the other end of an establishment where you had motorcycles, trucks, more cars going in and out between 5:00 and 2:00, would you appreciate that? I'm, I'm not saying that that's a never, never kind of situation over there on Mill Valley Commons, but as of right now, I think they hopefully find it's a different kind of, the proprietor maybe would have some consideration, maybe have more appropriate places for people who aren't going to be there between 5:00 or 6:00, maybe between 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning.
What are your hours of operation going to be?
During the week, 5:00 till 11:00. We're, like I said, we're not like a nightclub or something like that, we close at 11:00. We're a higher-class constituency there, we charge $6 for a beer. You're not giving down a pitcher of Bud Light at our establishment, being a glass of wine, you're paying eight, $10 for it. It's just not the type of place, there's going to be parties going on until, until 2:00 in the morning. Definitely not 2:00 in the morning, I'm too old, closed at 2:00 in the morning.
Yeah.
11:00 is, is our closing hour.
What about in the weekend, you said during the weekend?
So, weekends, we're probably, when we go somewhere, we are on 2:00 in the afternoon, it's still not open past, still past 11:00.
Okay, I, I also feel that, happy right now, we have the, coming off the bridge, you have Muse here, which is a Spanish Mexican restaurant, you can have libations there. There's Alinas, which you should be calling Alinas, which is again, with food. There's the Texas Roadhouse that is just up past us, where you can have libations with some food. Applebee's Neighborhood Bar in Grill, Chili's across from there, Ginger Gardens down the street. So, there's about five different restaurants, and they are restaurants, really, you know, the beer, wine, and whatever else dances here. And of course, we have hotels now in Hadley, which I'm trying to go back, years and years ago, it's just Bruce Hill Road, Bruce Hill Hotels, right down from, the only hotel I could think of, across from Chet Kowalski's, from there on Mill Valley Commons, if you remember.
So, can I just, couple more issues, can I address?
Yes.
So, I was there today at 5:00, there was twenty cars in the parking lot, so there's already people there at that establishment, two businesses there. Somebody's going to move into those other locations, I don't think they're going to be vacant forever, so there will be cars going in and out. I also have met with the, the chief of police and the fire department chief, and talked about the parking, the travel in and out of the area, neither one of them seemed concerned about, you know, it is tough quarter, I admit that, it is a tough quarter, I heard maybe there's going to be a stoplight put there sometime, but I don't know that for a fact.
But even with a stoplight, it didn't happen in that time?
Just, just, just a second, this gentleman's speaking.
I'm sorry, yes.
You need to be recognized to speak again, please.
So, I mean, so, I mean, that's, I, I have, gentlemen, I do diligence to talk to the local officials about, about the area. Someone eventually is going to, is going to move into those locations. What, if nothing else, I leave here with the feeling that you guys know that it's not a, like I said, it's not a nightclub, it's not, just the lights going off and the thing till 2:00 in the morning. There may be a gentleman in the corner, or, or a female in the corner playing guitar, singing very low at certain times. We don't have a jukebox, we have a, we have a stereo in that, that's just, it's just a basic stereo, we can, we can play music off of our phone, so, you know, I would liken it to a place you may go to, like abandoned building brewery, small, quaint, upper echelon type clientele, we can afford to spend six or seven dollars for a beer in there for, for a couple beers, sampling the different local flavors, and that's basically...
I understand. Yeah, yeah.
You haven't been recognized. Thank you. Anybody else with questions? Anybody on the board with questions?
Yeah, I, oh, that, that lady down there. I haven't recognized you when this building was built, complaining about what it could be done, it's own business. What do you expect this business to do? Just to build a building and leave it empty?
I don't, that's why I'm, I, I really don't, I understand, you know, business and stuff, but we're, we're, part of Hadley is, we're still residents there, and it's just not me, I have another neighbor right across the street, and that, that's butter, and they're restaurant people, and they come in, I see them go at 10:00, and come home at 10:00. And I like to hear my peepers in the spring, and I keep my windows open, I am not one that, you know, when it's warm, I, I close my house down. And it's just that, I, I'm really appreciative of the, of the proprietor for leasing or getting rent from, from other establishments, and most of the establishments, even if it was an auto zone, is closed by at least 8:00. And I'm just asking for, you know, we are residents, we, there is, for instance, we have Omegans landscaping and another business down on Mill Valley. Between 6:00 and 7:30, we hear beep, 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 and we hear, big, the big plow trucks backing up and stuff. I can't stop business happening in, in Hadley, and it's, I'm not asking that, it's just that we do like our peace and quiet in certain sections of the town. I'm going, you know, there's hasty fence that my cousin leased, there's other, other businesses around where we are, Chet Kowalski has that piece of land. From, from, you know, up, up from me, from the Texas lawn, there's a couple of residents there, and we're, I understand that town is changing, I've seen a lot of changes in the past fifty-five years. Lowe's and Home Depots and all these, but I, you know, I, I, we used to have a growl around, it was in the mall. There's appropriate parking. He's going to bring in some, I mean, there's enough of, hopefully enough of parking in that, in that Mill Collin, Mill Common, Mill Valley Commons, to appropriate, to be appropriate for another establishment coming in and the other smaller unit. Is that going to be enough of parking?
What's the capacity of people? Sixty people?
Sixty, the capacity, there's, there's seventy-some spots in that, in that building, so.
No, there's about sixty.
But I didn't finish, I didn't finish top of you about this. How long you been there?
At, at your property?
At your place, how long you been there?
I've been at least twenty, thirty years, and I have Mill Valley property.
How many years has that been a business zone?
My, my, the property?
Your property, your father was Pete?
Correct.
Is? He also wanted to sell that for a business, that whole corner, correct? Correct?
I have 4.2 acres there, sir.
But he wanted to, that was his land originally, right?
Yes.
He wanted to sell that, I think it was Langley Ford or something like that, I couldn't remember way back.
That's correct.
Now, you live in a business district, what do you expect to go back to a residential district? That's not going to happen.
Your money.
That's not going to happen.
John, just, just for the record, that parcel is zoned industrial.
Well, business or industrial?
It is industrial, not...
But it's not residential.
Industrial allows for no further, new residential construction is not allowed in the industrial district.
Right. I just want to point out that there is some historical precedent in town for these types of establishments to be on Route 9. There was a former priest in Hadley, a Catholic priest in the 50s, that named Route 9 as it went through Hadley, Highball Highway. So, it's not, like, use is changing at all.
Any other comments of anybody? Board, anything?
Yeah, is he going to have a sign? Where's your sign going to be?
I believe the landlord has approval for a ladder sign in front of the building, it's not installed yet, but it'll be one of the five signs on that ladder sign, so I assume he already had that approved for you, for your building. There's no sign, but it'll be, when the building sign is today, it'll be right in that location.
I have one more comment.
Yes.
Right now, how many, how many people were in there?
How many people, ten, ten or more?
Ten, they were, they were only like twenty people there.
Big party lot, yeah.
It's, it's the summer, we have three other colleges, three colleges in the area, and like I said, there's other establishments that they can eat and drink. So, you know, I, I can't look at it just the wrong way, this is going to be great, and everything's going to be quiet, but next door to the Mill, the Mill Valley Commons, there's a rental, and there have been, when trees come back, they like to have their, hey buddy, I'm back, and, and, you know, other parties, and they have bus people into that house, to the house right next door to me, right next door to the Mill Commons place. So, now, all they have to do is go over and tap into your place and say, hey, we got a place here to hang out. And at night, I had, I had people walking down from party at that house, screaming and yelling at each other, and dropping the f-bomb to wake me up at 1:00 in the morning. So, I mean, those things can happen, but they're not going to happen all the time. And I, you know, but, yeah, that kind of stuff can happen. They're going to find out here with that.
And those things happening have nothing to do with this business?
But that's, that's a rental kind of...
That, that's a rental issue, that if it's a rental issue and it bothers you, you should be taking that up with the Board of Selectmen or the, or the Chief of Police, because neither this gentleman or this board has any control over that. I mean, I'm not trying to make light of the issue, don't take it that way by any stretch, but that is an issue, and I agree with you, but that's not something we can have any control over, and whether or not this gentleman is there probably won't matter. It's really something to me, but I, I can see where it bothers you, I'm not trying to, like I said, I'm trying to make light of it, but that's an issue to take up with the Board of Selectmen, because I believe there is a noise bylaw and stuff like that that addresses some of that stuff, that they can't enforce.
Well, and I could, I could rent out my, my house there and have, you know, if downsides, if, not downsides, that's a separate word, but if I were to rent out that house on Mill Valley Road to professional people or to younger families, it's not going to, and the tap room is there, and other things are there. Like I said, it's just the hours, and possibly the extra noise, and the dangerous situation that there, you can, not three guys, people wanting to take a right into the, or leaving, it's just going to be a lot more easier.
Well, just a personal observation, if you're going to go out and tie one on at night, I don't think this is the place you're going to do it. I really don't.
Any other comments? Questions? Motion?
Yes, the second, new form? Yeah, well, it's small, it's because it's not site plan approval.
How did you get Arcade Miles to drive this up here?
I didn't, he came from, came from Amherst, but, pardon my please.
If I had a lumber from them, they'll do it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the application for a special permit based upon the following findings. Project is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. The problem, project is not detrimental to the established or future character of the neighborhood. Work will be conducted in accordance with this plan set. Approval is for the specific intended use of the premises as the tap room. Any other use is prohibited without further approval, as this is in the aquifer. Hours are, this is something you can come back to if you want, but hours, 5:00 to 11:00 weekdays, 2:00 to 11:00 weekends. Sign designed to be approved in the future, we want to see what it's actually going to look like. You're not putting in any landscaping. Approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including the Conservation Commission, the Sewer Commission, and Water Commissioners, and it's also subject to Select Board approval of a liquor license.
Question on that time bill. That time only contains to the business, hoping not, you know, like cleaning or anything else that can be before or after.
Opening, open, that's the open hours, operating hours.
Operating hours.
Operating hours.
Is that satisfactory?
Yeah, because we could be cleaning later or...
Right, so that's...
Right.
It'll get in trouble if they're in your building cleaning.
And I suspect that will be also addressed by the Select Board in there.
Right, yeah, but, well, yeah, and, but it's going to be in conjunction with us. For the tap room, I would put, maybe recommend, as a proprietor, Joe, was it, E.C.K.E.R.L.E.
Eckery.
Eckery. That if the ownership changed, they'd have to come back to us.
Okay.
Well, any use has to, doesn't it?
Yeah, but I mean, somebody, he could sell it to somebody else and keep it as a tap room, they could completely change the operation of the, of this thing, whereas this way, we'll make it, if it changes ownership, they would have to come back to us.
Okay, I'll add, if ownership changes, further review is required.
Good.
Okay, that's the...
Okay, that's the.
I'm trying to be nice to all you neighbors. Absolutely happy. Absolutely. I run, I run a facility south here with four hundred employees. Believe me, I'm nice to our neighbors right there.
Okay, so that's the motion.
That's the motion?
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Anything I have to stick with me or?
Um, no, just, good job, make sure you go to the Selectmen for their liquor license.
Good luck to you. Thank you.
All right, um, continuations. Which one do you wanna take up? Looks like most, oh, they're probably about split. Let's go with Evers.
Well, I should get it, maybe, uh, how many people do we have for Eversource?
Shady Lawn? Nobody, all right.
Okay, Eversource.
Eversource is next. Continuation for the solar facility at, uh, Bill, well, it's in South Maple Street, Mill Valley Road, kind of an intersection there. And Eversource.
Moody Bridge in South Maple, not Mill Valley.
It's got some splintage on. Oh, Moody Bridge, I'm sorry, Moody Bridge in, in Mill Valley, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, it wasn't you, Eversource wanted to present a letter we got from Mr. Earl. We talked about landscape, we asked him to meet with him. Set up a landscape plan on his property. So that's a letter that we prepared and there's an attached landscape plan. You'll see it on the, on the overall site plan as well.
We only got one copy of that letter?
I have two.
Yeah, we have a couple of copies of the plan here.
Wait, wait, South Maple, okay, here we go, that makes more sense.
Okay, um, good evening, uh, for the record, Mike Gaggen, the Lord in the Room, on behalf of Eversource. Uh, basically, since the last time we met, which I believe was on April seventeenth, there was a request to provide some additional plantings on the adjacent parcel, or I should say, the parcel, um, South Park property on Mr. Earl's parcel. And what I'd like to do is just kind of quickly go through, um, what those changes are. So what we did is if you go to the index plan, we actually revised the index plan, which is sheet I, I N in the set. This is basically the main area of the proposed site. Moody Bridge Road is up here to the north. This is South Maple Street. And this is Mr. Earl's property down here. And essentially, the request was made and we coordinated, um, the placing of the plantings with the property owner to provide screening of the facility from this house. We had a couple of different iterations and went back and forth. And jumping to, the plan of those changes is if you go to L.A. two, that shows the proposed plantings, um, in terms of how they will be placed on this property. So this is South Maple Street. Um, this is the driveway, the gravel driveway that comes up to the house here. And essentially, what we're doing is providing a row of arborvitae that will be placed right along the northern side of the driveway. Approximately two hundred and twenty-five feet long hedge row of arborvitae to provide screening from the proposed facility that's up here.
Are there any more arborvitae that grow in this general area of town naturally?
Yes.
Is it, they're, they're native, they're native to the area?
Yeah, we tried to, um.
On any of the fields around there, are there arborvitae growing?
I can tell you, if you go to.
Pete Cook, do you have any arborvitae on your property?
No.
No.
No, correct.
Okay.
Couple of trees. Yep, they're called, actually, the common name is called the green giant arborvitae. And that's specified on the plans in the plant list, which has been updated also.
What's the height of them?
Um, a very.
Planting at six feet.
Yeah, six feet.
Six feet?
They're green giants, they grow very quickly.
So that kind of summarizes the changes.
So to summarize, the total acreage of the total parcel that you own is?
Thirty seven acres.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two or thirty-four? Thirty-two?
We're hearing twenty-three, that's the agreement.
Thirty-two acres you own and the solar panels will cover four point seven?
Yeah, just under five.
Okay.
Is there any future thought of expanding that solar array on that site?
We're pretty much confined due to wetland resource areas. Uh, we, we act, honestly, we had looked at a larger scheme, but we're really limited by the wetlands and looking at.
What about to the north?
Um, same reason, we can't go any further north because the wetlands.
You can't build no solar arrays in that?
No.
No, it's only second?
No, it's all wetlands.
But could, could you buy any other land from a farmer and put a solar array in a few, in the future? Probably, right? Could this be the beginning of something bigger?
The buying futures are being put into APR, assembly.
They can take it out of APR though, can't they?
No, not easily, no.
Really?
The legislation.
Well, they, they, they put the solar law in so they can do whatever they want.
They put the what?
Solar law in so they can do everything they want.
Oh, no. It's a two-thirds or three-quarters vote of the legislature.
And you also, you also need town meeting approval.
To remove from APR.
Okay.
And you have to pay back what you got.
Mm-hmm, I understand that. Eversource has the money. I don't think it's that much, that's a lot. I understand.
Okay. Mr. Earl, make sure you agree with this, though, this is what you've agreed to. I understand. Yes.
Yes, sir. Well, so, as I said before, I'm not, you know, I'm opposed to this, of course, for all the reasons we've talked about. But because the bylaws really didn't protect this property, you know, we're gonna mitigate the, you know, mitigate the issue of destroying it, uh, the best we can do.
Well, but, but, the letter, excuse me, the letter that you signed is basically protecting you from this solar array, correct? What about everybody else? It's, nothing's being accomplished really. And, you know, we got a letter here from Mr. Siago. Is anybody gonna read this record, that letter into the record? Or will it be made part of the record?
Where is it?
Right here. Right here.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, here, that's right. Okay. Any other comments from anybody else in the audience? No, okay. We do a letter. My name is Fred Siago. I currently live at one eleven South Maple Street with my wife and three sons. Letter is in regard to the proposed solar project for the corner of Moody Bridge and South Maple Street. We are strongly opposed to the solar project. We do not object to solar power as we ourselves have installed a solar system on our house. South Maple Street is open farmland with beautiful views of the Hollyoke Range. Timement efforts, timement effort has been put in to label this area as a greenway for migrating birds and most of the land around it have been preserved by the Kestrel Land Trust. A solar farm in this area would go against all the hard work that has already been done to keep the land open and safe for birds and other wildlife. The solar, this solar project will also be an eyesore. Just drive to Atkins Farm and see what Hampshire College's solar farm looks like. One of the reasons we chose to build our home in this area was the open space and the beautiful views. And this project will devalue not only my home, but the land and homes located on South Maple Street. Hadley and Amherst already have numerous large-scale solar installations, many of which are within a mile of the proposed project. These installations continue to be built on farmland which goes against Hadley's heritage. Again, we support renewable energy, but feel the site selection for this project is not appropriate and we strongly oppose it. Signed, Fred, Fred and Heather Siago, one eleven South Maple Street. Any other comments?
I'd like one comment. I am Peter Cook, I live right across the street. I own property and my brother also owns property, right across from where this, this encsite is. And our feeling is that these people own this land and I think they have a right to do what is legally or environmentally acceptable. So I have no problems at all. I don't think it's gonna depreciate my property at all. And I could go back ten years and I could say, well, it was nice where I lived, but then, you know, a couple of houses got built here and a couple more got built there. But I didn't say anything, it's just, it's their property, they have a right to do what they want with it. So I think, you know, it's kind of, you know, they, they had property on Route Nine that they sold, put low on, and they came out and they built their nice houses over our way. No one said nothing about that. But I don't see what to complain about. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Entertained a motion, Mr. Dwyer?
Okay, so we first have to go through an administrative review. And I think everything has been addressed. It's been sent out for interdepartmental review. We didn't get any comments back from anyone, did we?
No.
Uh, we're within the timeline. We have received the required documents for site plan. The specs, contact information, uh, electrical schematic, design documents, elevations, yeah, all the documentation was correct. Proof of liability insurance. Did we get that in the package? If I relieve that.
That's usually provided by the contractor. The building, uh, you do raise for, as far as the building permits.
Okay, okay, so it's, it, the applicant that you shall be required to provide evidence of liability insurance in an amount and for a duration sufficient to cover loss or damage to persons and property caused by the failure of the system. Um, I'm actually not sure how much, uh, damage off-site would occur if the system failed. But why don't we just, uh, by construction? Just provide some evidence of appropriate insurance. You have site control. You don't have to notify the utility. Uh, land clearing is not an issue, soil's not an issue, wildlife corridor's not an issue, setbacks are not an issue, and parking is not an issue. So that's the administrative review. So let's see, what we, what do we have? We have the site plan approval. How many, how many permits are we dealing with?
Um, I believe we have site plan, aquifer. I'm looking for the legal notice. Let's see. Wide-scale ground mount solar, site plan approval, erosion and sediment control, four of them, and construction and aquifer. So. Okay.
I have one more question.
Sure.
What's the, like, the lifespan of those, of that solar? Do you have like ten years, twenty years?
Twenty-five, maybe two, um, possibly extend to ten more years. Five days.
So you're, you're, these things are gonna be similar, like, just, like, mowing a cement block or whatever?
No. No, no cement.
Twenty years, whenever, if you decide, you can just gank them right out of there? That's fair, we'll be right like it is today. We're waiting for the situation.
Then land it back where it is today.
Oh, that's right, we did not address the pilot program.
This has already been, I believe, this already has gone through pilot program?
No, at the town meeting, what was your, you agreed to pay the town in lieu of taxes? Pay them in lieu of taxes?
We agreed to pay property taxes.
They did not request a pilot.
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna pay pi- property taxes on this.
We're gonna pay property taxes.
Not pilot program?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
So what's the difference?
Um, usually, it's one year benefit. You don't qualify as a utility, so pilot program is a separate generation legislation and you're a distribution company, but that doesn't really apply to us. So we can't enter the pilot program. So you pay the property taxes, whatever we pay.
So they'll, they'll pay, they'll pay the tax based on the value of this process, of this parcel?
Yeah.
But nothing on the sewers themselves, there's personal property tax?
No.
No, they, we'll pay property rates, the equipment, all that. We pay.
Yeah, so they're paying real estate tax and personal property tax.
Hopefully increase those.
Personal property tax on a network of the array?
Right, correct.
How much would that be?
Uh.
What amount are we talking about?
In a ballpark, about two million dollars.
What is the tax we will pay?
Uh, that I don't know, I don't, we don't.
Not sure what your bill rate is.
We don't usually provide.
Eleven, figure eleven twenty-five a thousand? No, it's higher than that. It's closer to fourteen.
Oh, that's right, we had nine overrides.
You forgot about that, Joe?
No, you didn't get billed yet for that.
So it'll be roughly, you're talking two hundred and eighty thousand a year, roughly.
Uh, what are you paying now? Is that, that's not, I know that land's on a six-year, one A. What's kind of the tax you pay on that now? How's the tax, I mean, this is a point eight.
Yeah, that, that I.
Is it tab which?
It's a tab, it's a tab. It's a lot of jingle.
Just recall that Eversource has a market capitalization, if you had to buy the company today on the stock market, of about nineteen billion. So this is a drop in the buckets.
I know, Mike, but still, it's a lot of jingle. You wanna, you can put a bunch of houses out there and you add some schools and you add to this. And what do you got?
I don't even know.
That's right, Peter, you remember, how many houses were proposed there?
Three houses from South Maple Street.
No, but thirty years ago on this property, forty years ago.
Oh, oh, when Norin.
They was gonna put a subdivision in there.
Yeah, when Norin was gonna put a subdivision in, I think between the, between the left and the right-hand side, I think there was twenty-seven homes.
But the Wetlands Act changed since that.
But we didn't have that back when they were gonna put this proposal, when they bought the land.
You gotta know.
I know, but it was different when they bought it.
One little history on this, on this site. Who, who actually purchased this site? And what reason did they purchase it for?
They're asking Eversource.
I'm asking you guys.
Oh, that's historical data.
It's me.
That's what?
That's historical data that I really don't know.
The Eversource, Eversource and Northeast Utilities evidently didn't buy that the firm.
From my recen- recognition, uh, they originally bought it, they were gonna put a substation there.
That's what I, that's what I remember.
They were gonna feed Hampshire College.
Commercial use.
But that fell through because Hampshire College got their juice from somewhere else. And my neighbor, who, the son who sold the land to, I guess it was not Eversource, it was West Mass or whatever, he'd been farming it, you know, just hanging it for fifty years. And it's not the best farmland, you know, over our ways. Right now, the doctor have.
I was gonna say, you can't be good, last year was.
There's no tractors going out any field over there for a while.
Last year was, last year was pretty good.
You can't drive.
Well, it was the opposite.
How do you expect me to build a house?
But they were, they were gonna do it before, John.
I know, the laws have changed though.
I mean, there's a lot of houses in Hadley that really shouldn't have been built when they're built. That's why we had a stick sewer over there.
That's why the laws have changed.
Yeah, but anyways, okay, anyways, okay.
All right, I'm gonna do a motion to approve the application based upon the following findings. Project satisfies the general purposes of the site plan approval special permit bylaw. The intended uses are not permitted by the terms of, are not prohibited by the terms of the bylaw and are permitted thereby. Uh, work in connection with the following plans. What's the revision date on this?
May sixteenth.
Uh, let's see, were there waiver requests here? I don't think there were. Copies of the plans have been distributed as provided in the bylaw. Uh, proposal satisfies the, uh, site plan review criteria to the extent applicable. Oppose the following conditions. The, uh, design features, including but not limited to landscaping, are considered to be an integral part of the approval. Any. Any deviation from the plans as presented and approved will be considered a violation of the terms of Site Plan Approval. The approval is for the following use only, the solar array. No, uh, is there going to be any signage here? It's just a, a notice of some.
Contact.
Okay. No signage other than contact safety. Landscaping to be main, installed, maintained and replaced per the plan. At the tree caliber specified. No outdoor lighting. I'll leave in no storage, trailer, shipping containers, or any other facility not depicted on the approved site plan. We've been asking for removal security of $20,000, 20,000 per megawatt?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. 20,000 now.
That's what today's dollars go on. Inflation takes over, and 20,000 is going to be worth 20,000 in 25 years. And we have to take it down.
And that is being invested by the town.
In what, the money market?
I don't know. You can talk to the treasurer.
Look into that.
Uh, so, um, what is the megawattage on this?
Um, I think it's approximately one.
Okay.
Looking at panel sizes and.
Okay, so. Hmm? 20,000 should suffice. Approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including the Conservation Commission. And state agencies with jurisdiction. Uh, any project changes directed by other boards must be approved by the planning board. A project will be reviewed for compliance by an independent consultant on behalf of the planning board at the expense of the applicant. Site plan approval will not become effective until the, uh, this decision is incorporated with the, the plan set. That's the site plan approval. In addition, we are doing, uh, special permits for the, uh, app, business use in the aquifer protection and under the solar bylaw. And again, the finding is the project is, um, in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw. Work will be conducted according to the plans. And everything else is pretty much the same. In there. And that would be for both the aquifer and for the solar special permits. And the solar special permit in part is based on the administrative review. Finally, uh, a erosion and sediment control permit, which is not a special permit. Uh, the provisions of the, um, bylaw are applicable to this project. The project is not exempt. Proposed site work is consistent with the, uh, uh, bylaw. Proposed site work satisfies the performance standards of the bylaw and the design standards of the bylaw. And that will also be inspected for compliance. So that's the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
No, I do vote. I think you jumped the gun a little bit too fast, Mr. Dwyer. I have other questions on this and I've talked to neighbors out there.
Oh, this is the time to.
I, yeah, I, I.
This is the time to discuss it. We can't, we can't have discussion until the motion's been made. Now we're discussing the motion.
Okay.
I didn't jump the gun.
Right.
But you were kind of like, hurry up.
No, we, I asked before, is there any other, any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
All right. I talked to other neighbors. This place, this thing is split. 50% don't want this, around this area. And other people in town are sick and tired of these solar arrays going all up. And they're afraid what's going to happen in the future. These things just going to multiply and destroy our town. Destroy everything. I have no problem with a farmer in EverSource or whatever, Western Mass, they're not farmers. And they never bought this with the intention to farm this site. They bought it for commercial purpose. And that's what they bought it for. You know, farmers are saying, well, you know, you've got your land. Yeah, you got a right to do what your land would, right? But you still don't have a right to destroy a neighborhood or take the scenic views or whatever out of this site. And I'll tell you, I'm not happy with this at all. Not at all. I, I, I further thought that screening after what happened on the alleys on Mill Valley Road, I am fed up with solar right up to here. And they basically laughed at us. It was like a joke. And it said a screening. A screening for what? For rabbits and woodchucks? An eight-inch tree? And it's out of our hands? Well, this is not out of our hands. It's in our hands. And I certainly don't want this thing to happen again. And I, I, I'm really on the edge of just joining him and saying no. And I want to listen to Mike's story, what, what, what his no is.
Well, I, I think the record will show that I'm not against solar fields, large solar arrays in Hadley. Matter of fact, two weeks ago, I voted in favor of two, uh, from, from Mr. Galais' property in back of Mountain Farms Mall. But again, he was a farmer and he has no other thing that he can do with that property. He's limited. As Mr. Michakowski just said, a corporation made an investment here, not to, not to mow hay, not to graze cows, not to raise pigs, but they made an investment to do something that the corporation wanted them to pursue. And in my opinion, they made a bad investment. That's why I'm voting against it.
And they never paid tax for commercials. They got away with a, with an agricultural site. But they took the agricultural site out of this. You know, the, the screening. I may consider this, not that they stopped the screening there. Let them screen that whole site in. Let them put a minimum of eight-foot high trees right around the complete site. And then there's nothing in there about a warranty of the trees for a year, the maintenance program they're going to have on these trees, what, you know, I mean, are these trees, they're going to be green from the bottom up, or are they going to go up six feet when they grow up and they're going to be no limbs or no greenery on the bottom? The, the size of this fence in the perimeter, what's that, an eight-foot fence?
So, John, you've thrown out a lot of points and some of them are very valid. However, we have to craft a new solar bylaw like you were indicating when, uh, we're talking to our, our planner.
I'll tell you, Joe, what, what happened there got the best of me.
But no.
And that ruined the town forever.
But what, what we have to be aware of is that we cannot make up the rules as we go along. We have to have a new zoning bylaw. And the new zoning bylaw has, is, the state is pretty clear. We can regulate, but we cannot prohibit. The state is dictating what we can do. So we don't have a lot of control, a lot of authority. You may think we do. But the Attorney General has to approve our bylaw. And if we say, no, only to farmers, not to businesses, that will be thrown out. So we have to be careful how we craft our new zoning bylaw. So it's going to become more complicated, I think, than, yes, I like this project, no, I don't like that project.
So, regulate, let's regulate. Let's put a.
Well, I think we have to make a stand here.
A screening right around the whole entire site?
There's a higher, there's a higher zoning bylaw than, than Hadley's, believe me. We have to make a stand.
Well, it, it fundamentally breaks down into, we can regulate, but we cannot prohibit.
We're not prohibiting. Tell them to find a good spot in Hadley to put this. This is not the appropriate spot. Put a, find another spot. You guys got the money to buy another, another, I'm sure you could put a bigger field in someplace in this.
Could you point me to the section in the bylaw where it says this is not a good spot?
I don't think it's properly screened.
Could you point me to the section?
I don't think, I, I think it's, matter of fact, unfortunately, it's impossible to properly screen this.
Could you point and you open your eyes and.
That's why it's a bad investment. If they had looked at the bylaw, they would have realized that it's impossible to properly screen this, given the area of town it's in. That's my, my, that's my point. It's impossible to screen it. They should have known that. If you guys had done your due diligence when you bought it, you'd know that.
If he likes it so much, how would he like it if they did this right now?
That's not, that's not the point.
Would he like it? How do you like to look at Atkins Solar, Ray? Is it attractive to you?
That's in Amherst.
Well, it's, Amherst is coming into this town, in case you don't know.
So, uh, on the basis of the bylaw, I just don't see any reason to discriminate against a corporate owner versus a farmer owner.
Again, it, exactly, you can't, but it's your interpretation of the bylaw, Phil. I agree with you completely on that. It's not, not the fact that EverSource is a corporation. It's just the fact, the fact that they cannot comply with the bylaw on this particular parcel.
So it's a discussion about what is quote-unquote adequate screening? And I, what I'm hearing you say is there is no adequate screening.
That's, that's correct. Not for this particular parcel. If they could bury it underground, then it might be adequate screening.
To me, there's adequate screening when they screen right around there. That they got like low. There. That's reasonable.
So are you voting yes or no, Mr. Michakowski?
I want to hear from them. Will they screen it right around? Eight-foot screen. Guarantee the trees for a year and maintain it.
Are you talking around here, right, or?
Right, right around the perimeter of it. So nobody can see it from, no, no, they can't see it from this way. They can't see it from that way, this way, or down this way.
So we're screening from south to west to north and the east, there's existing vegetation.
Right.
So I guess I'm not.
Come back, go right around, follow the whole array of right around.
That's all, and it's all that.
Yeah, and this is what you wanted the area.
Yeah, that, that's not green. That, you can see through.
It's what's our other property, the other property, 38 acres.
Look, it's not for you to tell me. I'm telling you what I want to see done there. And if you don't want to do it, then don't do it. That's all simple business.
You're screening from somebody that's our property. I guess that's all I'm saying is, to the east is all our property.
How can you stop someone from looking through the open space? Because you own the property, you can't stop somebody from seeing through that.
The only person who can speak to that was Mr. Earl because he's at a higher topography. That's why we met with him and we looked.
That's because his got a higher pro, uh.
Yeah, he has the most view.
I'm not talking about that. That agreement he made, he is satisfied, that's fine. That's fine with me. But over here to the north, they still can look straight down here and see the solar ray. And I don't know, on this road here, when he leaves the foliage on the trees, because they're, they're, they're not green trees. They're just, they're trees with leaves on.
So, Mike, is there an environmental reason why we could not have there?
This is the wet, um, this is the, yeah, this is the wetland, um, under the local, um, Wetlands bylaw. We have to have a 35-foot no disturb buffer.
That goes the same for your fence?
I really think you just picked a bad place to think you could put a solar field in. You didn't, uh, see, see what the potential problems were here.
So basically, the fence is outside of that 35-foot no disturb area. We actually, for some of the plantings, for example, down here, in order to extend that, that was a variance that we had to go for, for, um, the Conservation Commission to be able to plant.
I don't see why you cannot, if you can put the fence in a, in a 35-foot setback, you can plant trees in that same setback. And put the, the fence in the correction, the fence is not in a 35-foot setback. What is it in?
It's, it's about 40 feet.
About 40 feet? Then plant the trees right next to it. And then you're still within 35 feet of the wetlands. You do that, you agree to maintain it, you put eight-foot trees array around it, then my vote is yes.
We did go back and have screening approval from the consignment of your original.
I don't care where you're going to go to do it. Wherever you're going to go. That's the stipulation.
Yeah, here's the, yeah, here's the 35-foot setback right in here.
You don't have to go all that way. You, your solar array stops short, you cut that whole leg off and come back, and then follow the fence.
That provides a visual screen from the north, that, that row of trees.
It doesn't cut, no, because if you look here.
Seeing it from Lee Bridge Road and.
Past the brook to the northeast, you can see this whole solar ray. And when you pass Kellogg's House right here, you look, Deucet's, well, it would be south. In a southerly direction, you can see this so, whole solar ray here. This, with the way you got that, will stop it at the junction of Moody Bridge, um, South Maple. And then if you look straight in a line like that, you'd see the tip of that other leg of Moody Bridge Junction. The way the crow flies, straight in, right like this. So if something stops at that, you're going to, you're going to be able to see the, the far corner from this intersection. Look at Jim, right here.
Let's see what you saw.
From here to here.
Okay, so from what I understand, against the legislature from EverSource, you would vote yes if we agreed, put that into the permit as a condition, that we would plant all, um, that northeast side. And encompass the solar facility, 360-degree and planting.
John, can you, can you show us exactly where you want, where you're, where you're saying you want the trees?
Follow the fence. Very simple.
So you're talking that tip.
Cut that way back down to, to the fence, come down here, right there's the fence.
Stop that.
Cross there and then go right around and.
So you're talking going across and around.
No, they can't cross that, can they?
So you're talking just.
Can they cross that?
No.
Didn't go around the fence.
So you're talking following this loop all the way around?
Yep.
Like this?
Right. Not a triple row, single row. Probably six feet on center, because they'll fill right in.
So stop, get rid of this.
Right.
And then just follow the fence line.
Exactly.
Like that.
Then, no one's going to complain they can't see it from the road a lot. And if they fly over with a helicopter, that's too bad. That's your problem. And, you know, an eight-foot tree and to maintain it, guarantee it for one year.
Eight, eight-foot, because everything else is six-foot.
Huh? How, how high are the solar panels?
They're about seven feet.
That's to the, from the ground, from the road, looking straight out the road to the top of those, the solar panels?
They're going to have a, you want it someplace.
What's, what's the height?
In the, uh, in the plan set, I think.
From the elevation of the road.
They're going to have a plan somewhere. They're going to, they're going to have, they're going to have that view somewhere. Should be toward the back.
I'm sorry, it's about eight feet to the back of the panel, according to the diagram.
What is it?
Eight, right here.
Eight feet?
Which is just the height of the fence.
What is that?
That, that's going to be the.
But what's the elevation from looking out, out at the road? From the road? Is the elevation of that road higher than I feel it's going to be?
It's fairly close.
You see my point? This is a place where they cannot fulfill the requirements of the bylaw as you see it.
That's the height of the back of the panel.
Eight feet.
Eight feet.
The road is about 10, 12 inches higher.
What is that? Do you see the elevation of the road and the, and the?
He just told you.
He just said the road's about a foot higher.
The crown of the road is 10 or 12 inches.
The road's about a foot higher than the field.
But for sure, if there are eight-foot trees here going by here, they're not going to see that, because you're not, you're in a car. So, if they're eight foot, and you're a foot higher, that's seven foot. If you're a foot up here, then this only makes it seven foot across. So, you just, if you want...
147, 147, 148. It's anywhere from a foot to level, to maybe a foot and a half.
Yeah, but I mean, driving by here, you're, you're going to be sitting in the car or truck. You're not going to be sitting eight feet up out of the ground, right?
Right, yeah.
So, I think the tree would, would hide all that.
Okay.
John, I'm taking care of all that, and that's no problem, Ted.
Want to go back to the, that's the one we're just looking at with all the, where the, the shows, the solar field with the wetlands? That one, yeah.
Probably no.
That one right there, right? Is that a condition you want to agree to, or do you want to go back and review it if you want and come back to us?
Let's go back and review.
Okay. So, we will take no vote, and we'll continue this hearing until... Well, you want to, could you, you want to be back here in two weeks or six weeks?
Uh, two, please.
I'll tell you, one thing I want to tell you, you can come back in two weeks, a week, a month. I'm not changing my mind.
I'm not asking to change my mind. They're looking, they're looking to go back and see if they can agree to that, that's all.
We also have the Conservation Commission, so they did agree to it, other portions, so...
So, is that 6:20? Uh, I think so. 6:20.
Yep.
So, two weeks to time at 6:20, so you want to continue the hearing, this meeting till 6:20? Okay.
I just want to clarify that, so if we decide that that is a viable option and we give permission from the Conservation Commission to do the planting, do we vote out yet?
Absolutely.
Want to make sure, where you're coming from?
What I'm saying now is what I'm going to say when you come back. All right? When they're coming back, 6:20?
6:20, wait, two weeks. Thank you. All right. Next one is the Shady Lawn Estates for definitive subdivision approval. And we were looking for a few conditions, oh, the...
Okay, I, I am not participating in this one, but I will take notes.
Okay. So, you wanted a letter from the fire chief?
We got that.
Which he should have given you, and I just gave you a copy of?
Yes.
You wanted, Joe wanted...
What does the fire chief say?
Fire chief, the, the fire chief says, "I have the planning board dated May 9th. I reviewed the sub, reviewed the submitted plan for site plan approval dated October 17, 2016 of the proposed Shady Lawn Estates definitive subdivision plan. I have reviewed the site, roadway dimensions, turnaround, and location of hydrants in relation to the proposed subdivision, and find that the plan as proposed is acceptable to the fire department. Signed, Michael Spankenable."
Okay, that was item number one. Item number two, Joe wanted to see a driveway cross-section and drainage. So, what, I've got a driveway cross-section, 12 inches of compacted gravel minimum. This is only going to be served one house, it doesn't need to be 18 inches. And the road, I have it pitched to the north, and on the side of it will be stone-filled swale, which we've used in the past for projects similar to this. So, it's basically a leach, leach field for the water to run off the roadway and into that. And then you want...
The covering.
The covering.
So, you've got compacted gravel, what kind of covering?
Oh, okay.
Potuminous concrete?
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got inch-and-a-half binder and inch-and-a-half finish.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Binder, inch-and-a-half, and finish, inch-and-a-half. Okay.
Okay.
Which way is this whole road pitched, Randy?
Toward the north.
To the street?
No.
Toward the north.
Towards Cozier.
Towards Cozier, that way.
The whole road is not pitched back this way?
It's going to be pitched back this way and then over this way, so the drainage ends up in this black, heavy black line right here. That's the drainage swale I'm talking about, which is this, stone lined, fabric wrapped.
Yeah. And that's going to run from this point to that point?
Yes.
How far away from the road is that?
A foot.
A, no, from the main road. There, there will be absolutely no spill over water going on the road?
The wa, the, the road has to come, you drain it from Middle Street, it's got to come down, so that it does not drain onto Middle Street. We cannot put any water into the town roadway.
Right.
So, there'll be backward pitch till we get to here, and then this will...
So, that, that water, that water from, from this apron is going to head that way?
Yeah. Um, that, that, Jimmy, you want, you wanted to, a note on the parcel that Cozier was going to get that said it cannot be further subdivided. I put that on there.
Mm-hmm.
And then, there is a note somewhere up here in the upper right-hand corner that stipulates that this is going to be, the house shall be single-family owner occupied only, with no accessory apartment allowed, home office shall be allowed, home business shall not be allowed.
That was fine, fine.
And I went through the bylaw to make sure that I understood that home office is just me and my family, and home business is, I can bring in employees, and I know you didn't want the ability to bring in employees. So, that should cover that concern. And I believe that was everything.
Okay. So, just for the audience and for the new people on the board, we do have wiggle room with subdivision regulations. And unlike the bylaws that are sometimes very rigid and dictate to us what we can or cannot do, section, well, it's 81R in the state statute, but in appendix D in our subdivision regulations, it does give us the ability to, to change the, the dimensions of the road, the width. But Randy has come up with something pretty close to our subdivision road regulations, so it's not just going to be some gravel thrown on top of the grass. So, that was my concern. And we couldn't prevent it, because once the zoning board of appeals did, did allow that house to be built there, it qualified for a subdivision. So, our hands were tied once the ZBA made that decision. So, the question we boiled down to is, do we put a full subdivision road with a cul-de-sac, which I feel would be not prudent, but only a punishment for something which we had no control over? So, that's why I'm in favor of what Randy has presented before us.
That was eloquent, Dr. Zagrodny.
Are there comments from anybody? Questions? Hey, any questions or comments?
I don't know what the hell he said.
He said Joe did a good job.
Okay, that's good.
All right. Ready for motion? Are we ready for a motion?
Shoot it.
All right.
You can put that in a minute.
Ah, let's see. The, let's see. Motion to approve the definitive subdivision. The project satisfies the dual purpose of Master General Law's Chapter 41, Section such and such, subdivision control law, and complies with the Town of Hadley subdivision regulations, except as waived herein. The layout detail called Shady Lawn Estates revised...
Revised by...
By 15, revised by 1517. Because of the small scale of the subdivision, the planning board determined that it is in a public interest and not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the subdivision control law to waive strict compliance with the Hadley subdivision regulations to the extent necessary to allow construction as shown on the reference plans activated in Master General Law's Chapter 41, Section 81R. The following waivers are approved, no streetlights, no sidewalks, right-of-way reduced to 30 feet, pavement of way reduced to 16 feet. That didn't change, right, Randy?
Pavement did not change.
Okay.
And the right-of-way did not change.
Okay. The planning board placed the following conditions, that this parcel A conveyed is to be Cozier, parcel A to be conveyed to Mr. Cozier is not to be further subdivided, so noted on the plan. No more than one dwelling unit may be constructed on each lot, and no lot hereby approved shall be further subdivided for the purpose of constructing additional dwellings. The property, the building shall be owner-occupied, um, I think that says owner-occupied, single-family dwelling, I'm going to read some Mr. Dwyer's notes here. I thought I wrote that, and no accessory apartment, nor the home business is permitted, but, I mean, a home occup...
Office.
Home office is permitted, home occup, home business is not. Is that the way it's worded? Yes, okay. The layout of ways and the municipal services provided to this subdivision have been designated for one lot only, and approval accordingly is limited to that number of lots as shown on the submitted plans. It is understood that the agreed, and agree that the roadway has been designated and will be constructed in a manner which will render it unacceptable to the Town of Hadley as a townway. And the roadway will not be presented to town meeting for acceptance. The Town of Hadley will have no obligation for maintenance of the way. All infrastructure, paving, grading, snow ice removal, care of drainage structures and/or of the utility shall be the responsibility of the developer and/or neighborhood association created for that purpose. The applicant will cause a sign to be posted at the intersection of the subdivision way and the adjacent public way identifying the subdivision way as a private way. This approval is subject to approval of other boards if and as required, including but not limited to Hadley Conservation, Hadley Sewer Commission, Hadley Water Commission, this Board of Selectmen, state agencies, including the Mass Environmental Policy Unit Act. Any changes, any project changes directed by other boards or agencies must be approved by the planning board, depending upon the nature of the changes required by others that may be necessary, become necessary to reopen the public hearing. The subdivision approval shall not become effective until a notice of decision is rendered referenced to the original subdivision plans and separately recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds, and the applicant and engineer certified the conditions set forth are noted. Copies and original are signed by the planning board, the building inspector, zoning enforcement, or the town clerk. And that is the motion.
Certainly.
And we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Mike, a very second. Is there anything to do with the aquifer recharge area?
No, because it must comply with the aquifer recharge, but there's no special permit required because of the residents. But he's got to comply with the size of the lot, which he does.
I know, I'm going to make a note on the roadway that it is private, I haven't done that yet. And then also, I believe we talked about the address being a Middle Street address, not, and I don't know if that's anything you guys need to be concerned with.
Well, that's Tim.
That, that, we've meant, we noted that on a lot of our very small, I mean, yes, I don't think we particularly need to note that on this. That's really a Tim, Tim zoning thing, not a zoning thing, a building inspector and a fire police thing, so that they know, I understand the concern, because we've got this single street in the middle of nowhere, and you hear it, you read about it, and the poor fire department with the ambulance.
They're going to have a number for E-91.
Right, and they go, they go look, I mean, it's got a valid number of, let's say, 10 Shady Lawn, and where the heck is 10 Shady Lawn? And if it's, you know, a number coinciding with, with Middle Street, it makes much more sense from a emergency response point of view. We don't have a problem with that, because it makes sense for that reason.
You have to change the number in front. What's, what's the number of this one? 132? Might be 132A, 132B, no?
I think there's an opening.
Yeah, if the line isn't open, you just got, if not, you're going to do some renumbering of the houses that it's going to pay for, like you've done...
I'm sure 130 is available.
Right, okay. You have a motion and a second. All in favor, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Passes four, zero, with one abstention.
Thank you, gentlemen. I think we're going to put a solar farm on this.
Good idea.
Why didn't you tell me that before you started? You would have seen a different ballgame.
I saw enough different ballgames.
You've seen enough?
How many, do you want any of these now, Jimmy?
Um...
For the methods, because that's what we...
Maybe one. Just one.
The assessors will want one, won't they?
They'll want it once we get it...
They want it once you get everything done on it.
The appeal period we've got to wait for and all that, so once Tom first tells me that it's clear, I'll get her to sign it and I'll bring it back, or...
Motion to approve the minutes, Jim?
Uh, wait a minute. Yeah, we've got a whole bunch of stuff to approve here. You're going to thank yourself?
And I, yeah.
See you, Randy.
Okay. I'll still certify that that was the vote that was taken.
Okay. We have minutes to approve? We'll go for that one first.
So, do you have the EverSource file?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to shove this in.
Okay, we have the EverSource file. That's EverSource, okay, you've got those. Okay, we have minutes to approve. I had to print them out, because I didn't get my computer today.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes of March 7th, April 4th, and May 2nd, 2017.
Okay. Motion a second, all in favor?
There was one typo on the, on the, March 7th one. Test pits have been dogged, just should have been dug.
I like dog myself. Dog dick.
Dog is good.
So, there should have been five, were there four, five?
I just got three. Were there others printed on?
March 21.
I must have missed those.
Which ones were they?
March 7th, April 4th.
March 21, right?
March 2nd, no, I didn't see them all.
I got March 21.
Okay, well, I withdraw the motion, and you make the motion to approve them all.
So, four, four, what's the next one? I like that one.
You figured it, you figured the dates out.
Four 18, and five...
Five two.
Five two.
Five two.
Five two, yeah.
Four four, four 18.
Three seven and three 21.
And March 21.
Correct. Okay.
Up to May 2nd.
Yeah, so there are five of them.
Motion.
Mitch Kowski, second, Sarzinski.
Yes.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, we also have, let's see, um...
Payroll.
Payroll, right, whatever. I made one out.
You sure that's that it?
No, because I filled one, I filled one out.
Oh, okay.
Oh, here it is. Motion to approve payroll for our second quarter from April to June 2017.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
It'd be best if that goes directly to the accountant's mail slot.
Oh, accountant, not the treasurer?
Not the treasurer.
Okay. And then we... And then we have an invoice to the Daily Hampshire Gazette for legal notices totaling $389.48 for taproom, wide-scale solar, okay, taproom and wide-scale solar, two different legal ads.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we have, after the next quarter, we have, this is the one we talked about for a reserve fund transfer so that we could actually buy a scanner, which would be used, shared, and used by the planning board, the building inspector, highway department, anybody else that would need an access to a scan, so we could scan our drawings in, and they could scan their drawings in, et cetera. And it is for $7,600 to buy a scanner.
So is it coming out of our budget, or is it...
No, it's coming, they're taking a reserve fund transfer and moving it into the planning board so it could be paid out of the planning board budget. So this is in addition to our budget for this fiscal year. And they've asked that we sign this.
So do we have the support of the building inspector and the highway department?
The building inspector is tickled that we're getting this. I asked him about this.
Maybe we should ask half of it to come out of his budget.
It's not coming out of his, it's coming out of the town budget.
I know.
Nobody's budget. Yeah.
What do you want to do, shortchange him?
Yes. He's trying to be funny over there. Anyway, so we need a motion for the planning board to have the chairman sign this.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Department requesting transfer.
How big will it scan, Jim?
It'll scan an ECIS sheet, which is, I forgot the exact, but it's the biggest standard drawing that we have in our file.
Perfect.
And it's a color scanner.
How many years are those things good for, Jimmy? Depends how much you use them, or...
Because all it is is a light bulb, you replace the light bulb, it's like anything, it's a LED scanner, so I'm assuming that after some period of time, the light bulb burns out, but there's no printing involved, there's nothing but a electronic reading that's done by the light bulb. So as long as the light bulb is working, this thing should be good for years and years and years because it doesn't print.
Sheet fed or flat?
What do you mean, sheet fed or...
If we take a 10-page plan, we take the staples out, will it draw it through?
One at a time.
Okay, so you have to lift the lid and...
You feed them in, one at a time, so it's got to do a single, it's scanned, okay, it'll scan single page at a time, but it could be, in theory, an endless, as long as it's within the width of the unit, the drawing could be 10 feet long.
Okay.
It's just a matter of what your computer's going to see when you...
Can, I mean, can you stack those on like you do a regular copy, or they read them by the...
That's what I meant by sheet fed.
I don't, I don't, well, I don't think so. I think they've always got to be fed in manually, one at a time. The one, any scan...
But when you scan it, what's that, put it on?
It'll scan it to a computer, and typically it scans to what they call a PDF. So if you go to Adobe Acrobat on your computer, anybody with Adobe Acrobat, which is a free download, can read these drawings. It'll scan, I think, up to four different or five different major types, but the most common one is PDF. And the one that I'm looking at, PDF is one of the multiples that it'll do. And if you have, let's say, an AutoCAD, you could actually scan this directly into AutoCAD because the computer and the scanner would talk back and forth.
Can you read it on an iPad?
Yes.
You can?
Yes.
I've been having trouble, maybe my iPad can...
Well, don't forget, some of these drawings are huge in memory. They've got a lot of big megabytes. Some of them are uncommon, they have 15, 20 megabytes, depending on the detail, and sometimes that just overloads the iPad. But I've read drawings on my iPhone, okay? Simple ones, maps.
So the one thing that, any kind of scanner that you feed stuff in on, is that the, whatever, the wheels that are grabbing it eventually wear out.
Right.
So that'd be the other consumable, but they're minor items.
Yeah, the biggest one is the main guts of the scanner, or the main brain of the scanner is not something that typically wears out. The light bulb, one of the things I did find out is that the LED, they make the LED ones now, which last a lot longer than the old fluorescent lights or halogen lights.
So are we getting a computer and a hard drive as part of this?
That's what I'm looking at right now because the $7,600 was more than enough to cover the scanner, but I'm not sure it's going to be enough to cover a computer. It would probably cover a hard drive if we attached it to a computer, because those things aren't expensive.
Yep.
But I think $7,600 is, depending on the price of the scanner, it might be cutting it close to get a computer.
Yeah, there may be something surplus at town hall or at the school that we could...
Well, the other thing, if we get, I have no problem connecting one of my laptops to it for now. And next year, in our budget, we try to get a laptop of, you know, a good laptop costs you $500. At least if we get, this is, you know, this one, this is a huge, I mean, I'm sure we could even use the... Actually, I think this thing scans to a, what you call it?
USB.
This might scan to a USB. Some of them do.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll figure that out.
I believe that's all I have.
Let's see, oh, discussion topics, I think that actually has been addressed, the viewscape protection.
We already talked to Larry about it.
That's really what we blended into what Larry's going to be looking at for us.
That was what we said about the solar ray of viewscapes and everything else as far as getting into the master plan, so Larry's going to look, get some information on this.
It was supposed to be on the agenda to waive the site plan peer review for the fire station.
And I forgot to put that on.
And the reason I asked that, because the same guy that does the peer review for us, Berkshire Design, is designing the system. And I have talked to him, I says, you know, "Do you have a problem?" He says, and I says, "You know, because you do peer review and because you work with the board all the time, I can't see you putting something together for a town project that's not going to work." And I had estimates between $3,000 and $5,000. We're right now $800,000 short with everything that has to go in that project. So wherever we can save some money, it's just, that's what I'm trying to do.
So there are two things they can do. One, I can just put it on the next agenda, or two, we can just take it up when the application is filed. You'd rather know in advance, probably.
Right. I just, you know, I want to get everything done that needs to be done, so when it comes into the planning board, everything is clean, there's no delays, and everything else, we can move forward.
Okay, I will, I will try to remember to put it on the agenda for the next meeting. You can remind me.
Okay. Right. Sounds like a plan.
I have nothing else.
I have nothing else. Motion to adjourn?
adjourning at 6:45.
6:45. 9:21. 9:20. That's what that says. We have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is history, thank you, and thank you, TV5.